We'll be establishing a new chair and vice chair. So I'll be running the meeting until that happens. So right now, we're going to call the meeting to order and let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for those of you who don't know this, we have two new staff members. This is their first night, so we are going to be running this all alone and hoping everything works well. So Luke, I will have you do roll call, please.
Councilman Hours or Commissioner Hours?
Here.
Commissioner Light? Commissioner Trujillo?
Here.
Commissioner Zernico?
Here.
Commissioner Green?
Here.
Commissioner Egley?
Here.
And Commissioner Collins?
Here.
And I'm going to jump a little off script. We have Mayor LaKind here who would like to address the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Sheila. Hello, good evening. It is nice to see that the crowd is sort of calm in Town Hall. It's not been my experience for the last month. But I wanted to introduce myself to those of you who I've not met. We obviously don't see each other most of the time and it's mostly, I get to read after the fact what you guys have stated when you're making your decisions. So I wanted to come here, introduce myself and also to thank you for, I don't know who the new members are that were alternates that just moved up. Greg, good to meet you. And Sean, you've been around here for a little while, right? And the other names I know, I don't know who Tony is though. But I just wanted to say hi and thank you for what you're doing and look forward to, I hope some uncontentious meetings between you and those that come and approach you and then what you guys hand off to us. I'm counting on good stuff. So anyway.
From there, I would also like to now officially introduce our new planning staff. This is Luke Kerr. He is a Planner One. He came to us from OU in Oklahoma. And then we have Jeff Ljeljegren, and I know I butcher your name every time I say it. But he is our new Planner Two. I actually worked with him when I was on the APA Colorado Board. So he has quite a bit of experience. So again, they are on day three, looking forward to getting them up and running. And I keep giving them stuff already, so I know they're learning. I just wanted to give you a quick introduction there. Now, we're going to move on to the election of the Chairperson and Vice Chair. So according to our bylaws, the Commission annually elects a Chairperson and Vice Chair. To be considered eligible, you must have been on the Commission for at least one year. And then I have our eligible Commissioners, Commissioner Trujillo, Commissioner Ohr, Commissioner Light, and Commissioner Green. Looks like all of you have had at least one year of experience on the Planning Commission. So to do the nominations, I thought, I know you haven't done it like this. I just learned that. So I didn't see in the bylaws how we did it. So I decided to do it like the council did at their previous meeting. What they did was took a sheet of paper, write your name on it, who you want to nominate, hand them down. I'll tally the votes. The new Chairperson will then take over and will follow the same process for the Vice Chair. And then if you want to move around, we can. If not, we can leave you where you are. But at the next meeting, we'll make sure to get you guys set up in the right spot. So at this time, if you would make your nominations for the Chairperson. Commissioner Egley nominated Commissioner Trujillo. Commissioner Collins votes for Commissioner Trujillo. Commissioner Zernico, sorry. Commissioner Trujillo. Commissioner Ohr is voting for Commissioner Trujillo. And Commissioner Trujillo votes for himself. So at this point, our new Chairperson is Commissioner Trujillo. So I will turn the meeting over to you. And at this point, we just need you to get the process going for the Vice Chair, following the same process.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much for the nominations, folks. As always, truly appreciate being on this board to assist the town, obviously, through the Comprehensive Plan as well as through the Planning Commission. With the second piece of business, what I'd like to do is obviously, if you would, go ahead and identify that individual that would be the Vice Chair. And just go ahead and put that nomination on there so we can read those off and identify that secondary individual. Thank you. All right, votes are in. First one I have is nomination from Ray Egley for Kathy Green. Next one, Commissioner Egley from Martin Trujillo. So Green won, Egley won. Next one is Green for Vice Chair as well. Next one is for Danny Ohr for one. And last one is for Egley. So we have a tie between Egley and Green. Up last one is Danny Ohr. So I got two, two, let's see. I got Danny Ohr for two. Yep, we got a three-way tie.
Armrest going on in the pit.
We've got a question. Was Egley eligible?
No.
That's what I thought, I mean.
Yeah. So it's a two-way tie between Green and Ohr. So if you want to do a revote, and we can do a verbal between those two.
I yield to Green unless otherwise.
All right, starting on the left. Ohr's, Ohr's for one, go. Ohr's for two, go, Ohr's. Green?
Pass.
Pass, abstain. Run?
Ohr's.
Ohr's for three and Ohr's. Mr. Danny Ohr's.
Who are now the Vice Chair for the Planning Commission.
I reluctantly accept that. The reason I reluctantly accept it is, I, when it comes time to handle these, I spent a lot of time in my career in charge of people. And I didn't have any problem sitting around the table with my employees. But when it comes time to managing this process, it's a whole different thing. But I did reasonably enough last time that the Director said I did good. So I guess I can if I have to do it.
Very well. Congratulations on your nomination as Vice Chair.
All right. What we're going to do at this time, real quickly, I'd like to go ahead and make the opening statement for the Rules of the Planning Commission meeting. Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Before we begin, I would like to state that the Planning Commission meetings are open to the public in person and via Microsoft Teams streaming application. All Planning Commission meeting information can be found on the Town of Monument's website. The Planning Commission's role is to conduct public hearings and to make recommendation to the Town Council. Good. Up. Our Town Council regarding land use manners in the Town of Monument. Each Commissioner agrees to a nonpartial, objective, and fair review, which includes no prejudgment of the projects. Should a Commissioner wish to disqualify him or herself for any conflict of personal or financial interest in this matter before tonight, before us tonight, please say so now. For those attending tonight who wish to provide comment on agenda items, you may speak to the Commission during the public comment section of the agenda. Those who attend in person will be called upon first and asked to come to the podium and sign in with your name and address. Those attending via Teams will be called upon next and are asked to utilize the raise your hand option and unmute your microphone when called upon. We ask that if multiple people have the same comment, only one person speak on the same subject. Again, thank you for attending. We will now begin the meeting with roll call. Staff.
We've actually done roll call, so we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes.
Perfect. Right now, requesting approval of the previous PC minutes. If I could get a motion, please.
I move to approve the minutes from December 14th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Ohr's?
Yes.
Commissioner Light? Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Zernico?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Egley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
And I apologize, I know it's now Chair and Vice Chair, but yeah.
All right. At this time, what I'd like to do is go ahead and proceed on to staff so we can start the public hearings and recommendations for both the two items that are currently on the agenda. So I defer to staff.
And I have Sean ready to do your presentation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. I've called up to the screen. First item on the agenda, which is, hold on a second here. For Preliminary Final Plat for Home Place Ranch filing number six. This is general vicinity map. We're looking at an area generally located on the southeast corner Sanctuary Rim Drive and Glen Eagle Drive. Project summary, Home Place Ranch filing number six preliminary final plat consists of 10 single-family lots and two utility open space tracks on 5.34 acres within the approved Home Place Ranch Phase One Preliminary Final PD acres. It includes a new street called Gammon Court and access from Sanctuary Rim Drive. This is the third filing within the Home Place Ranch development. The summary continues, as stated, 5.34 acres, 10 lots and two open tracks and one street. Lots range in size from about 9,700 square feet to over, to near 13,000 square feet. Tracks A and B account for 42% of the total land area or about 2.25 acres. These tracks are for open space trails, parks, drainage, and utilities and are to be dedicated to the Town of Monument and maintained by the Tri-View Metropolitan District. The preliminary final plat is consistent with the approved Home Place Ranch Phase One Preliminary Final PD. All applicable code standards are met. Existing zoning, the Home Place Ranch Phase One Preliminary Final PD site plan was approved by the Board of Trustees on September 16th, 2019 for 300 lots. Filings one and two were approved last year with 75 single-family lots in filing one and 67 single-family lots in filing two for a total of 142 single-family lots. Tri-View Metropolitan District will provide both water and wastewater services for all development within Home Place Ranch. Project background, a little bit of history. Following restriction was placed on the overall Home Place Ranch development. Prior to the recording of the final plat for filing four, five, six, or seven, Home Place shall construct an interim extension of Glen Eagle Drive that shall extend from the north side of intersection of Glen Eagle Drive and Sanctuary Rim Drive up to Higbee Road. The road shall have a minimum paved width of 33 feet. The 90-foot right-of-way shall also be dedicated at this time. This requirement shall be waived if the full design of this segment of road and the proposed improvements on Higbee Road have been approved and funded through the agreements currently pending with Tri-View Metropolitan District. The applicant has submitted a request to modify the above language to tie the construction of Glen Eagle Drive to the issuance of building permits rather than specific filings. Additional language is also being considered to tie down the roadway right-of-way width and dedication, roadway cross-section, and construction timing. Until and unless a modification to the above condition is approved by the town with input from Monument Fire, filing six can be approved by the town but cannot be recorded until the construction has started and the existing condition is completed, as stated, and the existing condition is completed. PUD minor amendment. A minor PUD amendment was approved by Monument Planning Staff last year to allow this development to proceed outside of the approved PUD phasing plan. This out-of-sequence phasing was necessitated to comply with the Town of Monument Fires, with the Town and Monument Fires provisions related to site access. Access and traffic analysis. The plat includes one point of access via Sanctuary Rim Drive onto a new cul-de-sac named Gammon Court. A future extension of Glen Eagle Drive from the Sanctuary Rim Drive roundabout to Higbee Road will provide secondary access. Streets and roads as platted are to be dedicated to the Town of Monument and maintained by the Tri-View Metropolitan District. A traffic impact fee and Glen Eagle Drive fee will be due at the time of the issuance of a building permit and remitted to the Tri-View Metropolitan District. Aldridge Transportation Consultants released its traffic impact study regarding the Home Place Ranch development in March 2019. Additional analysis, a preliminary drainage report prepared by HR Green analyzes the stormwater runoff from the proposed development. The report was released on June 18th, 2019 and designed to cover all six filings for the development, as were the preliminary soils investigation, which was released on June 12th, 2020. The applicant also provided a wildfire mitigation plan and wildlife impact report for Home Place Ranch in May 2018. Regarding the Comprehensive Plan, Home Place Ranch filing number six includes the following characteristics and attributes from the Comprehensive Plan, including connected, the areas connected by sidewalks and trails, served with existing town or special district or metro districts that provide water and sewer services, includes community amenities, and the scale and sighting of each dwelling should be appropriate to the lot size and lot configuration. Land Development Code Sections 18.02.250 and 18.02.260 Preliminary Final Plat. Home Place Ranch filing number six is consistent with both sections of the Town's Land Development Code related to preliminary and final plats. The plat conforms with this section of code because it proposes a harmonious development and lot pattern that is compatible with the approved Home Place Ranch Phase One Preliminary Final PD Site Plan. It also provides adequate access onto Sanctuary Rim Drive to all lots and tracks within filing number six. Future filings will require further road improvements and connection to Glen Eagle Drive. The lot size, lot coverage, and setbacks ensure continued compatibility within the community. The single-family residential subdivision will have varying design and facade treatments which will make each lot unique. Lastly, the plat provides adequate utilities. Staff recommendation, based on the analysis above, staff recommends approval of the Home Place Ranch filing number six preliminary final plat. Based on the findings, that the proposed plat is in conformance with the review and approval criteria as outlined in the Town of Monument's Land Development Code Sections 18.02.250 and 18.02.260. This slide, at the request of the Planning Commission, includes the entitlement process, which essentially outlines how we got to this point. I won't go through those details, but it does give our dates. And the following slides outline the fine print that is included in the sections I just referenced for the preliminary and final plat criteria. I'll just go through, slide through those. So it's part of our record. This slide covers the motions for the Planning Commission, including approval, approval of conditions, denial, and continuance. We have questions. We also have the applicant here to answer other questions related to this preliminary final plat. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, sir. At this time, what I'd like to do is applicant, is the applicant here? If you'd like to go ahead and come on up and give us any supplemental information regarding the actual plan there for plat six.
So they, the applicant has no other presentation, however, they do, they are available for questions.
Very well.
Yep.
At this time, I'd like to go ahead and open it up to public comment, please. Is there anybody in the venue here that needs to make a public comments? We have no one here. I'm going to refer back to Luke to identify if there's anybody online. Oh, Jeffrey, sorry. All right, Jeff, I take that silences. Perfect, thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and close public comments. And at this time, as we close public comments, at this point, I'd like to go ahead and open that up for the Commissioners for any questions or comments, obviously, before we go and proceed to a motion. So at this time, the floor is open to the Commissioners. If you would have any questions for either staff or the applicant, please go ahead and do so. Please, ma'am.
Of course. I, I'm going to just start out by saying, since we have new staff, that I probably spent more time on this than I should have because I, at least I, require more than a vicinity map. We got a vicinity map and we got the plat map and I had nothing to look at the context of this project. And I went to Google Maps and I couldn't get it there. So I was kind of working blindly. As a result of that, I don't really understand a couple of things dealing with the roadways. One is, they are now tied to building permits rather than filings? Could I get just a little bit more information?
They are not at this time. Right now, the condition as it was amended and approved stands that filings one, two, and three can move forward, but anything after that cannot be recorded until the wording as far as how Glen Eagle Drive is constructed is completed.
Okay, that's good. And my, my second question was, I read the language is, there's language being considered to tie down the roadway right-of-way width and dedication. Does that mean that they will no longer be tying this road to the 33-foot width and 90-foot right-of-way?
No. So the, the intent of the negotiation on this is to really make it more clear what the right-of-way width is. Right now, I believe it's 90, keeping the 90-foot right-of-way and dedication of that. But it's really more along the paving of the road. The ultimate road will come later, but we're going to have a temporary road. And is that built to a rural residential cross-section such as the county has versus doing an urban cross-section? So we're really looking at what is it that we really need for an evacuation, emergency access, and something that will keep us comfortable until such time as the ultimate road build-out is there.
But the ultimate build-out will be 33?
Yes. Well, the ultimate build-out will be hopefully more than 33. But what do we look at for now? What does, what works for the town and for the fire district for emergency evacuation, for traffic? So it's really, it's not doing anything to reduce the restriction. It's really to clarify expectations. Because right now, it's like, what does construction mean? When, what is the timing of getting construction documents in? What is it we're exactly building there? So town and the fire district have been negotiating with that. It's a separate issue from filing six, but at the same time, filing six can't move forward until we modify this. So it was really to let you know that you can approve filing six, they just can't record it until we either modify that condition or the terms of that condition are met.
And sorry, one more, then I promise I'm done. The drainage report prepared by HR Green, is that the consultant's consultant, or the developer's consultant? HR Green?
Yes, and they have a representative here if you have specific questions.
And then does the town have that reviewed?
Yes, I believe that was reviewed with the preliminary PUD and site plan.
Okay.
But we do also re-review as needed with the plats as they can.
That's it.
This is Commissioner Egley. And I don't mean to be redundant, but I did want to inquire about the proposed agreement for the roadway. I noticed on documents on demand that there's a letter dated June 1st to Debbie Flynn from HR Green with a draft recommendation on where they move forward. And I'm just wondering, is that part of the agreement that's being considered at this point?
So that is part of an application, a separate application that is being negotiated through the town and the fire. So they came forward with a draft of what that condition could be. We've since met with them and said, we're not quite sure that's enough. What else can we add to it? So that's the initial draft. They are also working on another version with some more milestones and more specific language. So we, we haven't finalized it yet, but we're still negotiating on what that would be.
Will that come back to us to review before?
It's right now, I think it was submitted as a minor PUD amendment. So I think it will ultimately depend on what the changes are. If they're less restrictive, then yes, it would come back to you. But if they're the same or more, then no.
Commissioner Ohr's? Okay, I want to be clear. They can move forward with filing one and two without regard to what is going on with moving forward to the Higbee. Is that correct?
Filings one, two, and three. Three is the community center, but yes, one and two are single-family.
Okay. So that's not being held up for this process.
Correct.
But we are now saying that six couldn't have go forward until this matter is taken care of, based on what we had before.
Based on, yes. So the filing you have before you is currently restricted from recording, which means you can't pull any building permits until and unless they build the road or the condition is modified to allow six to get recorded and permits pulled.
Okay. Okay. I was all prepared for this and now I don't know whether I'm prepared for it or not. But first, I think that this plat is an excellent plat. I think you've done an excellent job of putting in a plat and properties that blend very well with Sanctuary Point, blend very well with Promontory Point. And they will be separated from what we have on the west side, which may be somewhat different. But I think it's a very, very good plat and I have no problem with the plat. Also, I'd have to say, based on the conversations we've had to this point, that I find it difficult to understand why this plat could not be recorded and they could not go ahead and proceed at least to build out this plat. And I'll tell you why. This plat is located between Promontory Point and Sanctuary Point. And they're going to come out, the 10 homes, I believe it is, they're going, if they're built, they're going to come out. They're either going to exit out Sanctuary Rim or they're going to come down to Glen Eagle. They're not going to put a massive load on what already we have going down Glen Eagle. And I know that the developer wants to build something so it can start getting some money for investment. I've been down long enough to know that, okay? So I'm not sure how I'm going to amend the motion that I have. And, and if, if the Chair's ready for an emotion, when you're ready for a motion, then I want to make a motion. But I want to give the rationale for the motion and I'm going to have to do some changing. I mean, is it within the power of this Planning Commission to make a motion that they be permitted to record and build? Six, without regard to the, the other issue. Now, you know, I know, I don't have that in my current motion.
I would say no. I would say no, we don't have legal to run this off of, but I would say no because it's a separate. Filing seven is a plat and the restriction is a PUD. So you, you have an approved and recorded PUD that you're trying to amend with the plat motion. I don't think you can do that. You can try it, and then when it goes to council, hopefully we'll have legal council at that time, and they can just either incorporate your motion or strike it and say it can't be done. So the luxury of the planning commission is you're just recommending to the council. But I don't think you can.
Okay, I like that. But I've got to look at my motion and see how I'm going to change that, so I'm sure you have questions.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. A quick question on this one here. We're, we're talking about the roadway and the extension. Again, we have it baselined at 30 feet or correction, 30 feet in width with that 90-foot right-of-way use. Has the sidewalks ever been completed up there yet?
I don't know if they're completed. I would have to direct to them. I know the question came up about sidewalk connectivity. And in the PUD, it does show sidewalks either attached or detached on all the roadway cross-sections.
My, my concern is, is because within the final plat, obviously, on 1802.260, it says, "Prior to acting on the first Final Plat Planning Commission Board of Trustees, find that the final plat phasing plan will not impede the orderly growth in public services." There are several people in that Promontory Point neighborhood that do take the walks up there to the Sanctuary Point Rim, but without those sidewalks, a good case in point, we're having semis with backloaders going up Glen Eagle Drive at 7:00 in the morning, and you have pedestrians that are on those roadways with their dogs, their kids, and everything else. They're walking the roadway. So in good consciousness, from a safety perspective, I, I can't see this without the safety of those individuals on that roadway passing this. I think that the safety of the individuals on that whole conduct there or that whole connection, regardless if it's going to Higbee or not, that it has to be safe for those individual pedestrians. And I think even within Promontory Point, I mean, we continuously talked about this. But we're negating that individual aspect of the safety just alone going up from, like I said, that connection. The road's there. There's a temporary road, and I get it. But again, when it's contentious with a, a backloader going up on a semi, and we've done a survey, I understand that as well. But we're looking at surveys in relation to a completed product, not surveys in relation to the amount of trucks that are traveling up Glen Eagle and the amount of families that are using those venues as a exercise route or a, a recreational entity. So my question is, again, with the final plat being the impediment of public services, I don't see it that that safety factor is even being considered.
They would have to do the construction of the sidewalks within filing six. I would let them address specifically, I'm not sure which road you're talking about, that the sidewalks don't exist.
And, and I'm, I'm more than welcome. I mean, if the, if the applicants can tell us if the sidewalks are from Promontory Point, Glen Eagle, going all the way through that Sanctuary Rim to where plat six goes, are there sidewalks? For the residents?
Can you come up to the podium, state your name, and sign in for us, sir?
Mick Schumacher, I represent HPR Development LLC. Right now, so Glen Eagle would be the road you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
That, that runs up through from Promontory up to the roundabout, which also connects to Sanctuary.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So this right now is being this time of year and being able not to put concrete in without it failing. We've got frost in the ground, so on and so forth. We are to put these sidewalks in as soon as we can that go along Glen Eagle up to filing six.
Okay.
And without a great map, I do have one if you could.
No, no, unless the other commissioners would like to see that. I mean, I'm very well aware.
So it would be basically just to the east of Glen Eagle, which is filing six, the two lots. And that will be connected as soon as we can, and the weather does allow.
So would it be safe to say then that we won't allow plat six to go until it's safe to say that the mitigation and safety devices for the Town of Monument and the pedestrians are in place before plat six is actually agreed upon, recorded? Yes, sir.
I think by then, by the time that we want to record it, I think we should be able to have it in there. Again, it's, it's now to like April.
Yes, sir.
Mid-April, mid-April, probably be able to get that in, and we plan on doing the full landscaping and the whole marketing window will be completed. Just right now with, you know, Colorado winter weather, it's a little hard to put that in. If anything, it would be a temporary ripout, which is a economic waste of money. But I think that if by the time it gets recorded, we could have those in. Absolutely.
Okay, and, and I just want to make sure that, again, you're, we're looking at it from the perspective of the citizens within the state or within the town. But I also want to make sure that, again, we have a marker to say, hey, if this doesn't fit within plat six and it gets pushed aside, you know, we can come back and say, okay, what's, what's going on here? But I just want to make sure that that safety aspect, I think the plat is good. I think the, the design is good up there, but again, it's just that not only, I live down at the bottom of that Glen Eagle Drive, so I see these kids driving their cars at 60 miles an hour down that, that rip. I also hear those big industrial tracks with the backloaders coming up at 7:00 in the morning. So I understand that the turmoil, but again, what is the trade-off that, again, the people in Promontory Point and up there in Sanctuary need, and they need that safety aspect?
They, they do for pedestrians. And we also put that Glen Eagle in to complete Sanctuary just for life safety as well.
Yes, sir.
We have a dual access in there, which we built that right away, just to make sure that we have that life safety. So we are looking at life safety. I just need a little bit of time to put in the walkways.
Got it. All righty, that's all the questions I have at this time.
If you include that in the motion, could you make sure you're clear as to where, what you're expecting? Is it the completion of the roadway, just completion of the sidewalk, so that we as staff make sure we implement what you need?
All in motion already.
Got it.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, but before I make my motion, I'd like to pass the rationale for the condition that I'm gonna place on the motion out for you to read and send it down to you for two reasons. It's quite a, a long rationale for a rather short condition. But I'd hope to get a second so that at least we could have a vote. But, and also, I'm sending a copy to the director because, as she said, we don't have a lawyer, so if the motion's totally out of whack, she'll say, kill it. Having said that, I'm going to read the rationale so that everybody understands. And I certainly want the applicant to understand some of the wording that I have in my motion. You may or may not be pleased with. But I'm saying it because I believe that is what's happened. And I hope you accept the motion as an honest effort by a planner to, planning commissioner to do the right thing, both for you and for our community, and that's what we're here for. The rationale for the condition. Planning Commission recommends a condition to the Home Place Ranch filing number six preliminary filing plat to maintain safety and connection between the neighborhoods. This is based on the plat review process to include the comprehensive plan and the requirement to find consistency of the adopted policies which were developed through the extensive community engagement processing to seek the balance the rights of the individual with the interest of the community at large. And that's on page 13 of 64 in the comprehensive plan. The preliminary and final plat review requires, one, that the plat conforms to with the town's comprehensive plan, parks, trails, and open space plan and other plans adopted by the town from time to time. Two, the plat proposes a harmonious development and lot pattern that is compatible with the neighborhood and the community. The 2017 comprehensive plan includes that the land use policy, page 51 of 64, land use number six, provide linkage between neighborhoods, in this case Sanctuary Point and Promontory Point. The community vision on page 16 of 64, number five, is to continue the development and maintain a park and open space system that is linked together by a series of trails and sidewalks. And the community values, page 16 of 64, finally, many state that they like the community because they feel safe, and we need to maintain safety. The single-family detached, page 39 of 64, attributes and conditions, neighborhoods, access by collector's streets and individual lots by local streets connected by sidewalks and trails. In the development, the applicant began the process of building the road connecting Sanctuary Rim and Glen Eagle Drive and clearing land for the development on or about September 16, 2021. The applicant gave priority to land clearing for the home sites in filings one and two, but did not pave the road until October of 2022. Since on or about 2017, during discussions related to the extension of Sanctuary Rim to Glen Eagle and Home Place Ranch Development, planning commissioners and trustees have consistently expressed the need for the residents of the two neighborhoods to be able to safely move through the development. The prior PUD and filing approvals have not placed the timely construction of related activities for the safe movement of residents through the development as a condition of approval. Thus, land clearing and preparation activities for home construction have been the priority for the applicant and not the related need of the community. Placing a condition on the plat development of no building, placing a condition on the plat development of, quote, "No building permits be issued until the roadway connecting Sanctuary Rim to Glen Eagle Drive and the sidewalks are completed on the west and east side of the roadway." Will, one, permit the future residents in filing six plat residents in the whole development to move safely between the parks, trails, and open spaces in the two adjacent neighborhoods. Permit the residents of Sanctuary Point and Promontory Point to move safely through development to enjoy the parks and trails. And three, cause the applicant to place an equal level of priority on completing the roadway and sidewalks while preparing the development for other construction activities. And that'll be my reason for the motion. And then with regard to that other matter, I'd like to talk about another motion, but I, I didn't want to complicate this. Okay? So here's my motion. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of Home Place Ranch filing number six preliminary slash final plat based on the findings that the plat complies with the review and approval criteria as outlined in the Town of Monument's Land Development Code, with the condition that no building permits be issued until the roadway connecting Sanctuary Rim to Glen Eagle Drive and the sidewalks are completed on the west and east side of the roadway.
I second the motion.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Yeah, definitely. It's.
I want to clarify. How far do you want to run the sidewalk? Up to the, up to the roundabout?
The whole distance.
To the connection of the plat six from Promontory Point. Say again?
That's where plat six is. It's on that southeast corner.
Correct.
So that's where you want the sidewalks to run to? Basically behind those five or so lots.
Until the roadway, I said, to the roadway connecting Sanctuary Rim to Glen Eagle Drive. And the sidewalks are completed on.
He's on my side of what roadway? Okay, that's.
Well, we want the sidewalks all the way. Sanctuary Rim and Glen Eagle Drive.
And the ultimate road, not this, the emergency access road, that is a separate issue?
Separate issue.
Correct.
Concerned about that. So do I need to modify this to indicate be issued until the roadway connecting Sanctuary Rim to Glen Eagle Drive and Glen Eagle Drive and the sidewalk?
I think they just wanted you to clarify the sidewalks on what road. So if it's both Sanctuary Point and Glen Eagle, we can clarify the motion with that. Is that correct, Commissioner Collins?
All the way from the Promontory Point all the way up.
Yes.
Are those the correct roads, Glen Eagle and Sanctuary Point? Okay.
The motion's gonna get it, though.
Yep. So do you accept the amended motion?
Yes, I still second. And again, it's open for, I mean.
I just want to clarify.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. Make sure clear this.
Commissioner Oars, so you're not talking about sidewalks on the roadway connecting Sanctuary Point, Sanctuary Rim Drive all the way up to Higbee?
No, no, that's not, that's not.
Glen, Glen Eagle all the way to Sanctuary Point, which is already required. That was made very clear in communication that I had some questions with the director before the schmizing and the applicant came by.
And it looks like the ground's prepared for that.
Yes.
I'm just concerned, and, and I'm trying to be a bad guy, but you had a lot of opportunity between September 21 and October 22 to have gotten that sidewalk in when you had time to put the concrete in. I'm just not sure. Did you do it? Because your resources have been used to do other things and not give any priority to that. That's just. I think it's fair.
Yes, sir. Staff?
I can email this.
For the vote?
Commissioner Oars?
Yes.
Commissioner Zornico?
Yes.
Sheriff Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Egley?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
The motion passes six in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you, Luke. At this time, we're gonna go ahead. Did you have to?
Yes.
Oh, please.
Well, I'd like to talk about a motion. I really think this planning commission, based on what's going on with regard to the Higbee Road, that we ought to at least make our position, if we have a position that's positive, to the, you know, I, I think the council depends on us to at least move forward with comments that are significant to them making a decision. And I think it's a rather big decision with regard to holding things up with regard to Higbee. I understand we've got to have the emergency, but in the meantime, I'd like to see them be able to start doing more work on this plat maybe than they would do on filings one and two because of where it's located, because of it's got exits. And how do we express that to the, to you and to the familiar council? That could they relieve that requirement that this not be recorded? And yet, I don't want them to have any building permits until they get those sidewalks and the road finished.
It'd be more of a planning commission consensus. And so what I'm hearing is the consensus is that filing six should be allowed to move forward because of the importance of the connectivity when we are considering the modification to that condition.
Connectivity being?
The connectivity. The connectivity between Promontory Point, Higbee Road, Glen Eagle, especially as it relates to that emergency access point. Am I understanding it correctly?
Say the condition again for me, please.
The consensus is that the planning commission feels that filing six should be able to move forward because of its importance in creating that connectivity between Higbee and Glen Eagle and the emergency access.
Okay, could we add to that because the construction, if the applicant so chooses at six, would produce ten homes that would exit via Sanctuary Rim or exit via Glen Eagle and would not create an additional burden of any degree on the already traffic, if that makes sense? Is that okay with y'all?
I, I follow what you're saying.
Yeah, please.
Jim Byers, and I'm also with Home Place LLC. I believe that, that we understand exactly what you're saying, and we appreciate that because one of the things that we feel like is the group that was working on this project over the years has kind of isolated filing six, and it probably should have been called filing three, whatever you want to say about that. We understand the issue with the connectivity, with pedestrian connectivity. The vehicular connectivity is already in place. So it's pedestrian piece, which is probably Sheila, where we want to state that, or how will you want to communicate that to the board of trustees? We're fine with that. That's, that is not a, an objectional point to us at all. We get it. That's, that's easy. The conversation that is tied to the connection of Glen Eagle to Higbee Road is, is a separate discussion altogether and really shouldn't be part of the filing six discussion. So we want to keep that completely separate. The only, the only reason they're tied together at all is because of the note that is, exists on the P D site plan that restricts the recordation of filing six. We hope to maneuver our way around that to get, and the reason we believe that a lot or a permit count is the way we can get there is because that meets what the fire department wants to see for a total number of lots. And it doesn't tie it specifically to filings. It just says X number of lots or permits can be pulled, and then you have to have this, this road completed. It's our feeling that the note tying it to individual filings was the wrong way to go initially. So we're going to, that's what we're revisiting on, on that. So Commissioner Ors, we agree with you that this, this probably is the best next piece to get developed, but we'll, we, we would love to have your support. I don't know how we get that formally unless you came at the trustee hearing and acted as a community member and spoke in favor of it. I don't know that you can do it in any other way. And this is a recommendation rather than a, a motion, I believe.
Correct.
That you're making to the board of trustees.
We can report it. If it's a consensus that the planning commission would like to have this passed on, then we can do it as part of the record whenever it does go to council. If it goes to council, again, if, if it's more restrictive, it doesn't necessarily have to go to council, but if it's less restrictive, then we would have to take it back. So what I mean by that is filings one through three can be recorded. The way they got to the building permit number was they counted the number of lots that were already approved. So by adding, changing that from restricting it by filings to restricting it by building permits, we are not making it less restrictive. They could have already had a hundred and fifty-three lots. We're saying now we're just doing a hundred and fifty-three. That's how it can stay administrative. If we said we want to allow two hundred, then we're going to have to take it to the, the town council. So that's where the, the fine line is. So I like the consensus approach to this is so you're providing guidance to us as staff or eventually to council if it goes that route. But you would see it if it's a, if it becomes a P U D major amendment, you would see it again. If it's a minor amendment, that's where it stays at the staff level. So I think the consensus for you providing direction to staff at this point is acceptable.
And are we, do we have the wording providing?
I think so. I think your guidance is you would like to allow seven, as long as we make sure the, six, I keep calling it seven, I'm so sorry. Filing six, as long as we stay within providing that and no more, providing the roadway and no more.
Yep. And then seven, it's, it's its own thing, just like you had stated, it's its own monster, and we'll address that as we, as that comes up on.
Yeah, so it's its own monster, but if they wanted to pull those ten permits and then not pull ten permits in filing two, we still find that acceptable because they're still below the original amount. Yeah, right. And when it comes down to the emergency access, it's all about houses and number of populations. We, I mean, the location is important, but in this case, filing six does make more sense. It's right there at the intersection.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, good with that.
So from the developer perspective, we don't have any objections at all to your pedestrian connectivity requirement.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I, I'm very appreciative of that, and I'm appreciative of the, the commission approving that. And like I say, I can send you a copy of the motion and everything so you can just cut and paste it in there accordingly.
And to be clear, if we do it in a minor, if it turns out to be a minor one, I can give you the update. If you don't agree with it, we can talk about what the process would be there, but we can keep you in the loop as to what the language change eventually becomes if it doesn't become a major P U D amendment, which you would be a part of.
Now, based on the information we just said we're going to give to the commission, and if they agree with that and do that, that still doesn't void my motion that they get the sidewalks in.
Correct.
Before they get building permits.
It does not void it. That will be put before the town council. It's their option to void it, but we will carry it forward as your recommendation.
Exactly.
Any other questions, comments, gentlemen? Good, good on the right, or good. At this point, going to go and continue moving on, I'm going to move back to staff to go ahead and brief up the rezoning of Commercial Center to Light Industrial on the XL three rigging and that location right off one oh five and Beacon Light Road, please.
I'll have Sean Snow do our presentation. We're going to combine the next two with the plat and the zoning. Are we doing one separate, two separate? I can't remember if we're doing two separate presentations. It's one presentation. So it'll be one presentation on it, but there will be two separate motions, one on the zoning and one on the plat.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, Sean Snow, again, speaking as Sheila said, on the two staff reports that the planning commission received that have now been combined into one public presentation related to the XL three rigging rezoning and the subsequent request for a plat, which is called S B R subdivision filing number one, final plat. If the rezoning would be approved, basically then the, the plat would be the next step. So they, the applicant has chosen to combine these two. That's what this presentation will cover. This gives a location of the parcel, which is a five acre parcel up on north of us on Beacon Light Road, north of Highway one oh five, and I have Eighth Street on the map showing you the location here. Project summary, as stated, this project includes two concurrent submittals, a request rezoned five acres from Commercial Center to Light Industrial for a property located on the east side of Beacon Light Road, approximately point six miles north of Highway one oh five. And also a request for a one lot subdivision called S B R subdivision filing number one located on the same parcel. Background zoning and land use. This includes the map you see on the right side of the screen. The subject parcel is presently vacant and has not been legally platted. The owner wishes to develop the property for uses similar to other light industrial developments present along the east side of Beacon Light Road. In order to do so, town staff has recommended that the land be rezoned to Light Industrial and be legally platted. The map on the right shows the current zoning designations, the C C for Commercial Center, and you see one parcel on the far north that already is zoned as Light Industrial. Project analysis, the subject property has not been platted and is listed as vacant land in the El Paso County assessor's data known as parcel seven one one three zero 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 one. This five acre lot is presently zoned as Commercial Center. However, the future land use map within the Town of Monuments Comprehensive Plan identifies Light Industrial land uses as the desired future for this section of Beacon Light Road. The applicant's present rezoning application aligns with this goal. The proposed development of this site is a contractor yard, a permitted use within the town's Light Industrial Zone District, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This type of use is not permitted within the existing Commercial Center Zone District, which means that approval of a rezoning is required. The proposed use is not unique along Beacon Light Road. Therefore, staff recommended to the applicant that they seek approval of a rezone from Commercial Center to Light Industrial. Land Development Code Section eighteen dot zero three dot one four zero related to rezoning. Water will be provided by the Town of Monument and sewer will be provided by the town, by the Monument Sanitation District. The applicant will be required to receive site plan approval and will need to demonstrate compliance with all aspects of the Town of Monuments Municipal Code. A traffic impact study was not required due to the minimal traffic entering and exiting the site. However, the applicant did provide a traffic letter, which states that anticipated traffic generated will be no greater than twelve weekday vehicle trips per day, which they indicated is similar to residential trip generation of one to three homes. So this information, of course, as we looked at this through the lens of that code section that I just mentioned. Continuing on, the applicant proposes one driveway on the east side of Beacon Light Road. As part of the future development of the property, any proposed buildings will be located on the east side of the site near the I twenty-five frontage. The vacant lot is heavily vegetated with pine trees, and it is the owner's intent to limit impact to the trees and allow the trees on the center and west portions of the site to remain in place as much as possible, which will provide heavy screening between any proposed buildings and Beacon Light Road. In addition, per the Town of Monument Code, the structure containing industrial use shall be located a minimum of five hundred feet from the boundary of any residential zone district. That was the information that has been communicated to the applicant during their process with past staff. Land Development Code Section continuing with rezoning, Section D six or subsection D six also states that the proposed rezoning is in conformance or will bring the property into conformance with the comprehensive plan goals, objectives, and policies and other related policies or plans for the area, which this rezoning would do. Related to the final plat, which is in Land Development Code Section eighteen dot zero two dot two six zero, the proposed plat is in conformance with the town's open space plan and comprehensive plan. The proposed plat is not increasing the lot size or subdividing existing parcel into multiple lots. The proposed site is five point zero two three acres, which is consistent with the surrounding lots to the north and south at five acres and five point zero two acres respectively. Additionally, the density proposed as part of the development is in balance with the existing community. Therefore, staff believes the final plat is compatible with the neighborhood and community. Continuing on, one access from Beacon Light Road for a contractor's yard, storage and maneuvering of machinery. The site is not intended for public use. The property will have a perimeter fence. A sufficient supply of water is available, and sufficient water rights have been dedicated to the Town of Monument in conformance with water standards. The owners and or developers of the property will bear the cost of the improvements, and the remainder of the wet and dry utilities are also within the Beacon Light Road or within the Beacon Light Road right of way. While a traditional public improvements agreement has not been required for the development, the Town of Monument has requested that some costs related to a proposed fire hydrant and a future public sidewalk be addressed. A final drainage study, geologic hazard report, weed management plan, and wildfire mitigation plan were submitted and reviewed by the town. The proposed, proposed development intends to not disturb existing natural features on site as much as possible. This is accomplished by only utilizing approximately thirty-three percent of the developable site. All existing vegetation and trees are to be protected in place outside of the limits of disturbance of the project. The project is placed on the eastern portion of the site to be set back from one existing residential property across Beacon Light Road, and the existing trees outside of the proposed site disturbance area will be protected in place to help with screening from Beacon Light Road. As mentioned earlier, related to the comprehensive plan and the rezoning itself, if you take a look at the map on the right, it differs from the present zoning on the site in the sense that the future land use map contemplates this area as Light Industrial anyway. Future land use map in the comprehensive plan contemplates the site as Light Industrial and notes that the Light Industrial areas are suitable for small office contractor trades, small scale fabrication warehouses, manufacturing, and business services. The plan suggests that these sites should accommodate smaller business, office, research, and development space that require the distribution of goods by cargo vans and smaller trucks, but not semi trucks. It also recommends that development should be clustered and smaller scale to preserve view corridors from I twenty-five to the mountains with landscape buffering or other screening to ensure no visible outdoor storage. Continuing on, following opportunities and policies within the comprehensive plan may support the Light Industrial rezoning, including allowing for a wide array of land use types to meet changing community needs. Staff looked at this, thought the Light Industrial rezone while limiting uses will also allow for a wider array of uses which are compatible with the Light Industrial corridor contemplated along Beacon Light Road. Continue to promote Monument as the business, shopping, service, employment, and activity hub for the TriLakes region. Staff looked at this and interpreted as the proposed rezone will further their objective for promoting Monument as the activity hub for the TriLakes area. Related to the final plat, looking at the comprehensive plan, the S B R subdivision filing number one, final plat aligns with the following characteristics and attributes from the comprehensive plan. Some I've already mentioned, but I'll read the first two, which says that it would, this area would be served with existing town special district or metro district, so that metro districts that provide water and sewage services. Development particularly along the I twenty-five corridor should preserve views to the west and include a landscape buffer along the highway to reduce noise and light into, into adjacent land uses. Staff recommendations, there are two here because of course we're talking about the rezoning, but also the submission of this final plat. Based on the analysis above, staff recommends approval of the XL three rigging rezone request based on the findings that the request is in conformance with the review and approval criteria as outlined in Section eighteen dot zero three dot one four zero of the Town of Monuments Land Development Code. As well, another, the other recommendation, based on the analysis above, staff recommends approval of the S B R subdivision filing number one, final plat based on the findings that the proposed final plat is in conformance with the review and approval criteria as outlined in Section eighteen dot zero two dot two six zero of the Town of Monuments Land Development Code. The following slides cover the language related to rezoning as well as final plat. I won't read through this, but this is part of the record to show the criteria we looked at in relation to the rezoning and final plat. This slide, of course, talks about the motions for rezoning, and then there are motions for the final plat. So planning commission will be taking, making two motions this evening related to both the rezoning and the final plat. The applicant is here this evening and has a presentation prepared as well.
Thank you, Sean. Do we want to have the applicant go ahead and come on up? If you want to go ahead and present your presentation, please. Thank you.
Mitchell Hess with Kimmy Moore, and we have the.
Make sure you sign in, please.
Sorry. Thank you.
All right, Mitchell Hess with Kimberly Horn representing XL three rigging. And we've prepared a brief slideshow presentation. If we go ahead and go to the next slide. I think one thing I'd like to do is introduce XL three rigging and have someone from the company come up and kind of talk through their business. And so I'll go ahead and call on Brett to kind of introduce XL three rigging, who they are, what their company is about.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for meeting with us this afternoon or tonight or whatever it may be now. I'm Brett. I'm a part owner of XL three rigging and SBR. It's one in the same company. These are my two partners back here, my dad Rod and my brother Scott. We've kind of been in this area with this business since our, since its inception. We're going to be going on our eighth year. We had our first shop in Palmer Lake. And our current shop is in, it's a rental is in Larkspur because we couldn't find space in monument or in Palmer Lake to. To build and or rent until this piece of property presented itself. We're, we're local, we're very small, we're family owned, have no intention of being otherwise. We're currently only six employees. We're not trying to set the world on fire. We're just trying to carve out our little foothold and piece of the pie. We really like this area. My wife and I have lived here for thirteen years and the other two are down south a little ways, but. From what I understand, they have have some intention of moving up this direction. This area suits our business very well. It's close to me and I do most of the ground operations and. Will be kind of managing and controlling the building. This would make sense for me to do since I'm already here. All of our guys are in the area, you know, they're in monument, northern Colorado Springs, you know, southern Douglas County. And we all intend on staying in this area. It's like I say, it suits our business very well. We kind of serve the front range from Pueblo to Fort Collins. Mostly around Colorado Springs, Castle Rock, South Denver area, provides us a very good central location to be able to access everything. Which is kind of why we actively searched out something in monument Palmer Lake, Tri Lakes area. This piece of property presented itself. It was the first one that we had found in five years that suited what we needed to do. With a little bit of work on rezoning and what have you. And so that's why we are here tonight and we're seeking your approval for the rezoning so we can continue moving forward with our project. And hopefully get this building up and be operational and paying all the taxes to you instead of Larkspur. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, if we can move to the next slide, we thought it'd be make sense to go and show kind of the site plan that has been prepared for this. Site just as some background to kind of help show, you know, kind of a lot of the language that was described for the rezone and for the. For the final plat. And so basically, and I'll let Brett correct me if I say anything out of place, but basically their business, they move. Heavy equipment from one place to another place. And so they need a place where they can have an office and where they can kind of keep their, their company vehicles. And then they will go to another location, pick up a piece of heavy machinery, move it from that location to another location. The end of the day, come back, park their company vehicles at this location and have a place. Yeah, place to keep their company vehicles. From time to time, it sounds like if a if. Location B is not quite ready for that piece of equipment, then maybe that will come and be stored inside the. Big shop or the building that they have here. And so I think the, the term contractor storage yard was, was used as part of kind of a way to. Kind of take this unique use and fit it into something that's in the town's criteria. The intent is not to have a large storage area outside of this building where you have pallets of. I don't know, different construction materials, but essentially they need a place to park their vehicles and then, like I said, on the off chance or when, when needed. Store something inside of the building. And so this is the site plan. As I said previously, we have kind of sighted the building as far to the east as possible. The area around the building is just enough maneuverability so that they can drive their trucks through, get them into the building from either side of the building. And, and then also parking is provided on the north side of the building. The requirement to have an industrial use building more than five hundred feet from residences has been met. I think we were at five oh nine to five ten feet, five hundred and ten feet. The property that is closest to us that is a residence is not in the town. It is in unincorporated El Paso County on the west side of Beacon Light Road. And then is what is not shown on the site plan, but if we move to the next slide is, and it's better shown through an aerial. I should have included an aerial on this, but there are a lot of pine trees out there. And so. You know, we get the buffer dirt using space and we also get the buffer using exist existing vegetation. By putting the facility over on the east side as close to I twenty five as possible. We, I do have other slides regarding criteria due to how late it is in the evening. I think it might be good just to have, you know, accept any questions that may. Come before us at this time. So thank you.
At this time, like to go ahead and open this up to public comment, please. If there's anybody in the auditorium here that would like to make any comments. We welcome you to the front podium here. I take that as a no. Jeffrey, if you could please confirm if there's any questions on the internet, please through Microsoft Teams.
Yes, if you are on the team's presentation and want to speak, please raise your hand and. We will allow you to take a moment to talk about this. We see no hands raising.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we're going to go ahead and close public comments and at this time I open it to the commissioners for questions and comments. Please, I open it to all commissioners.
First again?
First again.
I like this, this project. I, I think the company is very interesting and. We're fortunate that you want to locate here. I will say that. Now say that in a minute. I'm going to talk about some problems I had in coming to this decision. Again. I cannot. Really get a good idea of a project based on a vicinity map. And it would have been really helpful had the land use map and the zoning map at least had this, this site ext. So I knew where you were talking about because I, I couldn't figure it out for a while. You know, I don't like to change zoning, you know, I feel you only do that when you absolutely have to. If there was a mistake made and I think everybody should know that when the future land use map that is adopted. Says this should be light industrial, that does not mean. That it needs to be rezoned to light industrial. It means that the use there should be light industrial. Therefore, I'm a little disappointed that you didn't consider a PUD for this site. Which is right below this site. And I say that because I ride my bike on this road. Pretty much every day when the weather is warm enough and the building in that light industrial area in the PUD. The architecture is really some of the best in town, but we're probably only going to get that. In a PUD, not, not a, not a light industrial. Although I am going to support this. And, you know, kind of on the same note. If, if we're going to put this in a traditional zone district. We can't put conditions on it. So we can say, yeah, you have to have a setback from I twenty five, you have to have a setback from Beacon Light. But we can't tell anybody to save trees. It's, it's really nice if you want to do that, but in a PUD, we, we could require that.
So you can, but you can also with a zoning, you can make it a condition of the zoning, it gets written into the ordinance and then it does apply to the property. Even with a straight zoning. So if you wanted to have.
Can conditionally zone?
Yes, you can conditionally zone with the, it depend, you can't change the existing setbacks or anything like that. But if you wanted to add additional restrictions, you could do that.
So you're going to add some preservation of the.
If you wanted to add preservation of trees to be considered or however you want to order, you could do that.
Okay, that, that's nice. I just, I see this property along Beacon Light between one oh five and county line road. It, it has two front doors, you know, it's, you can see it from I twenty five and you can see it from Beacon Light. And there's the beginnings of something very, very nice on that road and it would be nice to continue that. So. You know, that, that's a little bit of a disappointment. However, I am going to vote for this and I, I do, the, the company is, is very interesting. It's kind of a niche company that does heavy equipment moving and. I'm glad to see that come to town. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. This is Commissioner Wiggly. Is it Brett, the owner? I just had a couple of questions. Can you, or maybe yourself, can you describe the size of the building? That'll be constructed on this location and the type of equipment that could be stored within that building.
Yeah, so the, the building that we have planned is eighty by one hundred, set back in the very far northeast side. It was as far back as we could put it without interfering with fence lines and being able to maneuver things around. We have, I don't, you may have come in before, but I drove like one of our daily trucks in. It's like a regular Ford F four fifty service body truck. Has, you know, some of our daily tools in it. We have smaller trailers. We tow behind those that have forklifts that we use. They're not off-road forklifts. They kind of need to stay on like hard pack sort of ground. We store all that stuff currently inside, load up a trailer, go somewhere, do a job, come back, store it all back inside again.
Yeah, you mentioned that there may be sometimes where. You know, you transfer, you transfer a piece of equipment from site A to site B and site B is not quite ready. So you bring that piece of equipment back. I mean, is that five percent of the time or is that ten percent?
Yeah, it must got to fall somewhere between ten and fifteen percent. Most of the time it's, everything's ready to go. Both sites are prepared. Lot of stuff we, you know, site A is out of state and we receive in-state at our customer's place or vice versa. We ship it out of state also. So yeah, like out of all of our traffic at ten percent is probably, I've never done the math on it. That's roughly, that's got to be pretty close. We don't, we try not to bring stuff back because it's costly for everybody and it's a bit of a pain. I don't like, it's already dangerous work. I don't like handling everything more than we need to.
Okay, go ahead. Got a question for staff. So on slide twelve, you talk about a public improvement agreement. And you, you basically requested you address that. Where's that at?
That I'm not sure. A public improvement agreement is anytime there's public improvements that includes parking sidewalks, all of those.
Where's your conversation?
I don't know who they were having it with, but as part of the development process, they still have to bond for any of those if they're doing it. But you might be able to answer any question.
Mitchell could probably answer it better, but it was in the project file that a discussion had occurred and they had gotten to the detail of how much. How the fire hydrant would be split and so Mitchell, if you want to address.
So you do have an agreement.
So I don't think an official agreement is there, but or a formal agreement, but basically. The fire department needed a fire hydrant for this facility and also one for the facility just to the south of us. And so the agreement kind of came up that if this facility moves forward, that they could go in and cost share that, the cost for that fire hydrant. That was one item. And then the other part had to do with sidewalk in the future when Beacon Light Road is improved, having. Money that would be put aside and I think in an escrow account so that that sidewalk could be easily be funded.
And should we have that part of any more? Should we make that?
Add that to the subdivision. So yes.
That specific information is in your, it's in your staff report, the, about the. Those agreements that was just.
I just want to know if it was finalized yet.
Right.
I'd just like to make comment that you talked about conditions for, but based on what they said. And I think they're good honorable people. They're not going to take any more trees out than they need to. Thank you.
I have one more.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I agree with you, but there's, once you do the zoning, it's there for the people after them and the people after them. And the people after them. This, this may seem non-related, but. These are five acre lots up there with very little reason for anybody to walk. Have they ever considered instead putting a bike lane in, which I do ride that and, and a lot of other people do. And it's dangerous, I think. Just curious.
I'm not sure and I'm not sure if this part is still under county jurisdiction as far as their ownership and maintenance. So. I don't know. I know they have, as part of the RTA, there are some funds to improve Beacon Light. What I can't remember is the full distance. I don't know if the applicant knows.
They were looking at it up to county line, but I don't, I don't know what that cross section looks like if it includes.
I don't either.
Last part that I saw did not extend quite down this distance to the property. So I think it was a little bit further north. That I'm aware of, at least the plan that I saw.
All right, last questions for you. What are you, he's going to have to answer this one for me. Is there fuel that's going to be stored on the property? Fuel in the, in like a underground storage fuel tank and above ground fuel tank. Obviously, it's mitigation of fire hazards into the public and the individual area monument.
Will you let us? Current.
I'm just asking you a question.
Currently, we have never had any fuel tank or anything or we're small enough that we just go to the little Conoco right in town and fill up there. The, the rocket is kind of our main hub where we fuel up every day. We have looked into it for future things. Our landlord currently really wants us to put one in. But it kind of doesn't make sense. We're not planning on being there for too much longer. That is a question that we had for, I mean, that was like after the building's done. Is this something that's possible? We, we don't know. As an option, yeah, we'd love that. It's not a deal breaker though.
Okay, but right now there is no fuel tank, nothing, nothing going in. Perfect. The other, the other question I have for you is off to the southeast of the property across I twenty five. Obviously Palmer Lake High School, good competition, obviously going in there. They have their lights or they have their football games, things along that lines. Night skies here in monument obviously is always a consideration. What light or what light fixtures will be placed on the property? Is it, I mean, advertising signs? Is it, I mean, here's a big glowing glob of area that you guys have. That is illuminated I twenty five. What's your intent for the lighting out there?
Or, or intent currently, we're absolutely willing to conform to what the community standard is. We don't have any intentions of putting up some big giant huge lit up billboard unless it's something that the town says is okay and that they want there. That'd be fantastic. But we, we don't currently have any plans for it. Right now, the only plans for any amount of lighting is just like whatever we have to have outside legally for. Trip hazards and things like that. He may know a little bit more because he's kind of done some of the building planning and stuff. There's things that we do have to have for ADA parking and lighting above a bay door or something like that, something along those lines. But we currently haven't really even discussed like, you know, what do we even want to put in for signs? Do we even want to put a sign in? Like, I, I don't know. Is it, is a banner on the back of the building? Okay. Does it need to be a lit sign? Yeah, we're absolutely willing to conform to what. What the planning commission needs and what the town of monument needs. It's nothing there is a deal breakers. We're going to walk away from and say, ah, well, that's, we don't want to do this anymore.
Sure. And I'm looking at it from two perspectives. One, the actual zoning, no questions. But now looking at it from the final plat, what is going in that we're saying is good to go.
Yeah, so, so far only what we're legally obligated to do.
Sure. Okay, perfect. Real quick, that answers that question. What is the heaviest truck that is going to be? What is the heaviest truck that is going to be going into the property? Heaviest that you're moving right now and what is the future proposed?
Uh, we have, uh, two semis currently and we, with no plans for expansion. And total capacity on the trucks is 80,000 pounds. Um, not that we necessarily haul that capacity, it's just what they're capable of. Um, should be similar to the traffic that's already there with the businesses that exist with the, uh, you know, the equipment rental place and, uh, so is there a steel place or something there?
Yeah.
So nothing more than what's currently already taking place on that road.
Will the entry to the property then be, I, because I'm trying to imagine a semi with a full trailer. Uh, will the entryway be expanded in connection to Beacon Light to allow for entry and exit of the property?
Yes, um, when we, we had applied for a variance, um, a couple of months back, or quite a while back, I guess now. And that was part of the, the variance. Um, if you can go back and look at those plans from that meeting, uh, there is an inset for the fence. The fence line runs up to the driveway and there's a pretty substantial gap. And then the gate is inset. I can't recall off the top of my head. It's, you know, 100 feet, uh, truck is 75. So we wanted that because for safety for our own guys, we don't want to block the road and have to have somebody open the gate. We want to have access so we can pull in off the road, safely open a gate, have the truck continue on without blocking any traffic on Beacon Light Road. And that was something we wanted to do.
Correct. And, and yeah, I remember the conversation. I just wanted to make sure for the record that the public does understand that you have taken that active approach to make sure and mitigate the safety aspect of that.
Yeah, and then we don't have to modify the road with any turn lanes or center lanes or widening or anything like that. There's plenty of property there to be able to do what we need. The whole front half, we're pretty much not going to touch. So, uh, yeah, that, that entry gate should be well off the road.
Perfect. That's all questions I have at this time. Any other questions?
Anything, just for clarification, if they want to put signage or anything of that nature, that'll come to you all and you all will control that, correct?
Correct. They have to pull a permit and we do a review third time.
That's what I, just one for the record.
All right, thank you. At this time, we're going to go ahead and request a motion. If there's any other comments, questions from the commissioners, none to the left, none to the right.
I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Can you put those motions back up on the screen?
Yep.
Give me a second here. I can say it in a lot less words than she's going to have appearing. Understood. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the, oh, where'd it go? Approval of XL3 rigging request to rezone five acres from commercial center to light industrial based on the findings that the proposed rezone is in conformance with the review and approval criteria outlined in section 18.03.140 of the Town of Monument's Land Development Code, subject to the following condition. And that condition would be that the agreement on slide 12 is, uh, formalized.
Do we want to take a vote on the first, on the rezoning first? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, this is the rezoning motion. Ideally, you would place that motion on the subdivision because it's tied to that, but you can do it on both as well.
All right, second, that motion? Yes? Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, sir. And now we're looking for the second motion. That second motion will be on the final plat for SBR subdivision filing number one. Again, this is, will be for XL3 rigging. Any motion on the second portion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of SBR subdivision filing number one, final plat, based on the findings that the proposed final plat is in conformance with the review and approval criteria as outlined in section 18.02.260 of the Town of Monument's Land Development Code.
Would you also like to make that subject to the finalization of those agreements?
Subject to the finalization of slide 12.
The public improvements agreements and/or cost sharing of the fire hydrant and-
PIA.
Second. Is your hours?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, uh, for that, Luke. And thank you for the applicants for bringing that to us so we can go and get that voted on. At this point, we're going to go ahead and move on to non-agenda public items. Uh, yeah, at this time, going to refer to staff if there are any public items that we need to confer with or talk about.
This is mainly if anybody's in the public who wants to come up and address the planning commission.
Is there anybody in the public that currently is in the venue that would like to address the planning commission? No one at this time. And online, uh, Jeffrey, if you would check-
Online, are there anyone that would like to speak up and address the planning commission? Please raise your hand. No one's raising hands.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Uh, next item is reports, communications and announcements. Uh, at this time, I'm going to open that up to the commissioners. If there are any reports, communications or announcements, uh, please go ahead and state those now.
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments I want to make. Um, anything on that annexation, that Monument Ridge?
Uh, I think last time I told you, we had reached out to them about meeting. Um, they came back and said they were currently working with the county on the east side, but we're willing to discuss, um, working with us on the west side. In my conversations with the county, they have not, um, either met with them or formally introduced anything. So as you guys may or may not know, Megan Harrington, my predecessor, is now the planning director for the county. So I've put a bug in her ear to keep me up to date on what's going on.
Okay, okay, well, I just wish they would come back and talk to us. Um, two, uh, I want to talk about, ask you about minutes for this commission. And Ms. Hogan, when she did the minutes, she did rather detailed committee minutes. I know all previous, it was told to us, they just had to be abbreviated. What, what is your intent with regard to the making of minutes regarding this commission?
My goal is to keep us as similar to council as possible in all things we do so that as planning commissioners decide to move up to council or as people come in and look at our documents, they're similar. Um, so that is our goal. And I'll be talking about this more in a minute when I talk about planning department goals for the next year. But that's kind of our goal is to try to be more, we're, we're change, we changed the format. I don't know if you noticed, we changed the format on the agenda a little so that it's more similar. Um, we use the same wording. So we will be working very closely with the town clerk's office to try to streamline all that.
Great.
Yeah, I appreciate that because I had a terrible time going through minutes trying to get the information that I, that I asked you for because it was just very sketchy on what we had. So thank you very much on that. Um, the other point that I'd like to, to bring up, I've been on here a long time and it was past practice when I came on that the Town of Monument would give a certificate to any commissioner that has successfully completed his or her term on this planning commission. And those were given out and then all of a sudden, that ceased. And we had a, we had a chairman, Ms. Stroup, uh, who was a very good chairman and served very successfully. She wasn't given a, a certificate. I begged the question, it was told was overlooked and it died there. And then Megan came in and of course, none of that was in place. So it was not carried on, it was not carried on. And now we're here with you. So I'm asking, could the town consider re-implementing that? We've, we've got a commissioner that just went off, Commissioner Wilhelm, that was an excellent commissioner, served well, did a lot of hard work. Uh, I think he at least deserves, uh, recognition by the town, uh, for what he did for our community. I know that Commissioner White, um, who also left some time ago, was given a plaque that his office actually built, but it wasn't, no, nothing from the town. So I'm, I'm asking, could you see if that could be?
Yes. Is that, do you recall if they did the awarding of this certificate at planning commission and/or council?
They did it at the planning commission. And we asked, you know, the commissioner was asked if he or she would, actually, there were no she's that are, well, there were she's earlier on.
Yeah.
Um, but, and, uh, ask if they would come to a committee, you know, one of our meetings.
And it was a certificate, not like a plaque or anything else, just-
No, it was just a basic certificate.
Correct, right.
The town, the seal, uh, I think it was the mayor, you know, just again, thank you for, you know, your service to the community.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'll see if I can find one. There's a million files that I'm sure I could search through and see if I can find something. And if not, we'll just come up with it and let you look it over and give us your blessing and then we'll set it up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Please.
Uh, this is Commissioner Eglie. I, uh, in, in preparing for the meeting tonight, I wanted to take a look at the improvements that were planned for Beacon Light Road. Uh, and so I spoke with the county project manager yesterday via phone. And he said that they actually have that planned in two different phases. So I just wanted to kind of give you just really quick, down and dirty. And, uh, they're still acquiring property rights along roadway. They haven't completed that yet. Um, phase one would have been the intersection up at the top of the hill. And they're having some difficulty there because what they want to acquire is on the north side, which is in the Douglas County, uh, area, and it's actually in a conservancy. And so they're having some difficulty acquiring that property. But he feels that the southern end, the, what they originally called phase two, they're about 95% there and they anticipate that they'll start construction sometime, uh, late summer of 2023. So, uh, hopefully in the next eight to nine months, we may see some movement along there, but nothing up on the north end at this point. And I only bring that up because we looked at annexations along there in this project tonight. And so it impacts that as well. Uh, a couple of the things that I just wanted to bring up, just as, as food for thought for us as a group. And I, I, again, I don't know what our purview is and what we can do. But I think that one of the things as we move forward is to discuss whether or not we try to take a look at landscaping guidelines for the town, uh, particularly as it applies to residential. Um, how much, how much grass, how much land, you know, really, uh, water-sucking type of plants and grass that we want to have in new residential developments? Um, Kathy is an expert really on design standards and she's educated me on some of that. And I know that we don't have true, down and dirty design standards for a lot of things. I think those are things that we need to take a look at. And, uh, whether that's us as a group and in conjunction with the board, uh, town council and community members as well, I just thought those are some things. So, uh, that's all I had.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen? Good. At this time, that's all we got from the planning commission. I'm going to defer back to staff, uh, for any public, uh, for any reports, communications and announcements, please.
So the one thing I, at this time, it doesn't look like we're going to have any items on the February agenda. So I was hoping to make that a work session. And what I'd like to talk about is our meetings, our reports, our presentations, things that you'd like to see from us, uh, maybe some goals and objectives for the commission for the year and then kind of update you on some, um, other processes. So if that's acceptable, or even if we have one item, maybe reserving time afterward to start talking about those things. But ideally, that's what we'd like to project. Basically, a new department trying to come up with some things that work, things that don't work, and make sure we have your input into that as well.
Great. No, I think everybody's in agreement, definitely would be well worth it.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, good. Could you include in there, and you may already have it in mind, include in there? I think what's important, I think we have a very effective planning commission. Uh, but I, I'd like to see us go over as a group, the responsibility, basically, that the comprehensive plan places upon us. Because I know that as, as you planners, you look at the comprehensive plan, but you don't give it the kind of emphasis that we're able to give it for any number of reasons. But I do believe that there are things in the comprehensive plan that sometimes takes precedence or should be given consideration above and beyond what the ordinance say. And I think it's our responsibility. And I think the council looks toward us to bring those things forward to them for their consideration. Uh, and so I'd like to discuss that if we could.
Yes, we can do that.
Perfect. At this time, if there are no further reports, communications and adjourn, uh, and announcements, obviously, I'd like to go ahead and adjourn, uh, the Town of Monument's Planning Commission meeting on, uh, today, for today, and, uh, we will commence next month. This time, we are adjourned.
If you have any other ideas for the work sessions, send them. Um, we'll make sure we list them all so we have good conversation. Kind of like a draft agenda for that? Okay.